I call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Senator Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Citizens comments, if anyone would like to speak to the council, now would be a great time to do it. Okay, we have no public hearing tonight, we have reading and approval of minutes from November 27th.
I will move approval of the minutes from November 27th.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried, and we have the same condensed version.
Um, will approval of condensed version of the minutes from November 27th?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda, which I will move approval of, consisting of audit of city bills, pay estimate number fifteen for the water treatment plant, Bagmanee Construction, November transit report, notice that it's the top ridership in the history of November, so actually eighteen is is catching up to seventeen. The tree board minutes from October seventeenth, gambling report from the Eagles, application for exam permit for the Turkey people? Stevens County gobblers? And I will make that a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion or any questions on any of the light items, sir?
I have a couple things here.
Sure.
Uh, first thing, I was reading through the tree board minutes and they were talking in there about the policy, it was under future discussion, policy regarding potential solar panel conflicts? And I'm just wondering what with solar panel slash tree conflict, I guess is the way the word is. What is the potential conflict, I guess I need to...
So, potential conflict is if someone wants to put a solar panel on their roof and their neighbors have large trees, what is the, you know, what's gonna happen to those large trees if they're blocking the sun to hit the solar panel? So, that's what that discussion was.
Okay. So, we're looking at maybe adapting the rules or some kind of...
And Jay is in the audience.
And also, also city boulevard trees. Not only the neighbor's trees, but if somebody tries to put something up and says a city boulevard tree is blocking their solar panels. So, that would be city.
So, that, that means that there's a you'll need to develop, we'll need to develop a policy for, for that.
There has been some issues, little small issues that we've talked, maybe we could talk about.
Yeah, for sure.
What would be the issue with the neighbor's trees, there's not anything you can do about that? Was there?
Well, if a neighbor has, if a neighbor has a tree and you wanna put a solar panel on, you can't make them cut down their tree.
You can't make, you're right, you can't make them cut down their tree. I suppose the issue comes in women's.
Well, it was more of a boulevard, it's a city.
Just boulevard trees?
It was more, yeah, that was more the original idea than we did talk about private property. But we haven't got into it at all.
Right, I see it was just the future and I
Future, yeah.
I just thought, I just thought it very good, cause I guess I wasn't aware of thinking it through, I didn't really realize.
Good question. Thank you, Jay.
The other question I had, Mayor, was I think it's light out of twenty seven to fifty five, Grant County TZD payments, light draft, if you could have put that, there was one for the Grant County and then there's one to Stevens County, what are those for?
If you remember, we're the fiscal authority for the TZD grants. When the reports are submitted to the state, the state sends a check to the city of Morris and then we pay Grant County and Stevens County therefore to cover that overtime. So, all it is is redistributing funds that the state sends us to cover the overtime for the three agencies.
Explain TZD.
Uh, TZD is a toward zero death seatbelt enforcement, driving enforcement.
Okay.
So, it's not actually an expenditure, it's just taking money the state gives us through the grant and distributing it to the other agencies.
Gotcha. Yeah, I didn't, I couldn't remember what TZD stood for.
So, they, they do the seatbelt, you know, driving, do they do anything with texting?
And they're driving texting, yeah, there's six or seven major enforcement period during quarters of the year. Different topics during each one, there's a couple different DWI ones, uh, there's a couple seatbelt ones, a couple texting. And I believe in the eighteen, nineteen grant period, they added another texting and driving enforcement period over the seventeen, eighteen grant period.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Jay. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on the items on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Petitions, requests and communications, we have a donation from West Central Homes, we needed just to a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept the donation, the police department from West Central Christian Homes.
I'll second.
That's pretty cool. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, there was, there were three items at your place, one is this next thing, the resolution of adopting assessment for current services. Um, one of the people came in and paid, so that's the new one, um, there is a new resolution for the next one for the fire department and then the two thousand nineteen licenses were at your place also. Sorry, I should've said that earlier, but anyway, so we have the resolution adopting assessment for current services for the one location. I will move approval, or I will move the resolution to do what it says. Uh, five thirty East Fourth.
I'll second.
You don't have the revised copy? Yeah, it's just, it's just the top one. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Uh, we'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Senator McAlvey?
Yes.
Waller?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Ellison? Yes.
Mayor Heskey?
Yes. And we have resolution appointing more fire department assistant chiefs and other officers.
I'll move approval of the resolution appointing more fire department officers.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Obviously, the chief is gonna stay on.
Yeah, they'll come up next year, there's two of them that come up next year.
Okay, great. Cause that is, yours is a two-year?
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, any further discussion?
Second, good group.
I'd say. Uh, we'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Senator Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Heskey?
Yes. And we have the next resolution approving a four-year agreement with the Stevens County for the city attorney services. Uh, Aaron, could you step out of the room? Oh, never mind.
Your buffs.
If my math is correct, that's roughly about two and a half to three percent a year, is that soundable already?
I guess the neighborhood's yep.
Do you agree?
Yeah, roughly.
I would assume that's probably consistent, but another headache, but it's a good deal for us, is there any questions on that?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very good deal for us.
Yeah.
I'll move approval of the resolution for the four-year agreement with Stevens County for city attorney services.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote for this resolution, please.
Senator Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Mayor Heskey?
Yes. City managers' report and recommendations, we have two thousand nineteen licenses. And I guess this is all of them.
Yes, Stacy was
I understand.
Stacy was busy trying to work them.
She was. I promise the Legion won't get the insurance in.
Do we need a motion on this to accept this list of, uh?
Yes.
To approve? I'm gonna make that motion accepting the list of like two thousand nineteen licenses, city of Morris.
I'll second.
Any? Any further discussion? I will have roll call vote, please.
Senator Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ellison? Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
I will abstain as an officer of the Legion. Uh, city manager report.
We can probably spend a little time on this since we can't have our budget meeting until six. So, if anybody's got any questions, you have to, and then discuss, we can do that. Let's start off with the state budgets, budget surplus. Uh, that state revenue forecast came out and, and as everybody probably knows, if you saw the news, the state of Minnesota is in really good shape, one point five billion dollars. There is some discussion about the next two-year budget and what's gonna happen with revenues coming in, so you know, even though they have a surplus, you're probably gonna hear some, some discussions from the legislature about being careful because the next one, of the predictions are that the next one's probably not gonna be as good. The economy doesn't look like it's gonna be as strong in the next few years, but they've been saying that for, I think this is the tenth, what'd they say, the tenth one that's been, been positive. It used to be negative all the time, but, um, as I said in here, one of the things, I think this is good news for local government aid. Uh, there's a new governor and this governor knows and understands local government aid, is very interested in making sure we're taken care of, uh, I think I mentioned, I think I mentioned at the last meeting the interesting part about what's happening at, at the Minnesota State Legislature and we have the only divided government in the United States right now, from what I understand. Uh, but the metro area Democrats took control in the House and, and I think they're everything I'm hearing is they wanna be careful that they don't just focus on the metro area and forget about the rural areas, so uh, local government aid is really important to the rural areas and Paul Moreport was appointed as the tax chair and he's, he's probably the smartest guy in the House right now when it comes to local government aid and taxes and stuff, cause he's been around for a long, long, long time. He was tax chair before and then the Republicans took over, so that's, that's something that's, uh, really, uh, really important, I think, when the discussion starts, because there's, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is asking that, you know, the, the local government aid be funded at the level it was in the past. Uh, and if that happens, I think it's gonna be positive for us here, but then there's also a lot of discussion about what's gonna happen with the formula, you know, because some people don't like it and so you might see some work on that, but that's that. This next item, uh, we're probably gonna be bringing back to you shortly. Aaron and I have had a chance to talk about this and, uh, actually I met with the Civil Service Commission uh, to talk about the process for hiring a new chief of police. That process has been started, uh, we did advertise for that position and it's gonna be open through the end of December, the twenty eighth. And then the Civil Service Commission will come back and we'll look at the applicants and figure out who we want to interview, but there's, there's a couple other issues that, that we've been talking about and dealing with. Um, we did select a new sergeant, that new sergeant's gonna be, uh, starting the twenty sixth of December, that new sergeant was not from within the department. And, uh, actually is a very qualified person that's gonna be coming in, but one of the things that, that we learned through the process is that, um, we have a charter that spells out authorities and responsibilities for administration of the city. We have union contracts that spell out what the rules and regulations are with how we deal with our employees. Uh, there's a civil service state statute that deals with civil service commissions and how they operate and what they do. We have a local civil service commission that has rules that are adopted for us more locally and they all conflict. They all conflict. Uh, and so that's one of the things that we started looking at, because typically the city manager has the authority to hire, except for the cases of department heads. And then the city manager would have to bring that, that hiring to the city council for ratification. But the city council doesn't get in the process of selection. It's just a ratification of the selection process that was done. Same way if there's discipline that happens with department heads. But when it comes to employees, uh, that are in the law enforcement, we have a civil service commission. Uh, and those rules smack up against the union contract. And then there is, in some cases, no real clear process for how things are supposed to be done. Cause, um, the union contract is pretty silent on how the selection process is done. There is no reference whatsoever in the union contract as to the civil service commission. Uh, and yet at the same time, the civil service commissions, if you look at the rules, they're, they're, I mean, they're pretty pretty, uh, extreme rules with regards to how things need to be done and they haven't necessarily been done that way. So, so that's one of the things we're looking at, I don't know if you wanna train him in and...
Yeah. I took a look at the civil service commission's statutes and then there's also other statutes that guide the police department on what they're supposed to do as far as the discipline, hiring and that kinda thing, and you can elect to be part of the civil service commission, civil service commission laws are old laws, they date from I think the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, and then for whatever reason, the legislature enacted other laws in the seventies and eighties that completely conflict. And we, a long time ago, as a city, chose to be part of the police civil service commission, um, structure. So, we have set ourselves up to have conflicting laws. We've put ourselves in a position where we can't win on some issues and my recommendation going forward to the city is going to be just so that we have one set of rules that we're working by, uh, that don't conflict, is to abolish the civil service commission. That will be my recommendation. I don't see another way to do it without getting rid of that. Cause then if we give her the civil service commission, we'll have the state statutes and we'll have the union contracts. And that's all we have to concern ourselves with. Right now, we have a body of law that we can't win. Either, either we make a decision and we're violating one set of statutes or we make a decision and we're violating the other. And that's a position I can advise you to be in.
No, I, I did a little research on it myself, you know, uh, looking at purposes of civil service commissions and if I understand it correctly, isn't it a vehicle that's also supposed to be for the benefit of the officers as well? So, they can come to the commission with potential grievances, things like that nature, or isn't that one of the purposes?
No.
What's the purpose of a civil?
Typically, the way civil service commissions were, were working was it's, it was a hiring practice. You know, and when you look at law enforcement, it, it, it sets up rules, so, so for instance, typically what you'd see with law enforcement is the civil service commission would provide the authority that's making the appointment of a position with a list of names of individuals that are ranked like one, two, three, actually the rules state the top three candidates are presented, but it doesn't say who gets picked. It just gives you a ranked listing of who's in there and, uh, in some cases, um, uh, maybe the worst case scenario is if let's say a police officer shot somebody. Where is that gonna go to? Is it gonna go to the civil service commission for them to decide what's gonna happen with the police officer? You know, or is it gonna go to the union contract, cause right now in the union contract, if a police officer doesn't like how things are done in the union contract, they file a grievance, that grievance goes to the, the, uh, the chief of police if it's not settled there, it goes to the city manager if it's not settled there. Then it goes to an arbitrator and then the arbitrator will rule on it. That's the way it works with law enforcement. There's not a word in there about the civil service commission. I'll give you another example of the conflicts as you start looking through it. If a police officer is hurt on the job, what happens to him? Any ideas? Cause according to the civil service commission, they can apply to the civil service commission for leave. But there's workers' comp, and the workers' comp dictates, the union contract dictates what happens with an injured worker.
Yeah, the union contract would dictate their, their time off or their...
Right, exactly, and it says right, sick leave and vacation and all that. So, there's a lot of little things in there and, and at the same time, there's pretty good, uh, cooperation between the two documents as far as like, uh, the, the job description. You know, because they have job classes within the civil service commission, police officers one, specialist one, sergeant one, but uh, with regards to the, like, the sergeant position that we have right now, union contract's silent on, on how you promote somebody to a different position, the civil service commission has some rules on how, how you hire people, they talk about promotion. They talk about promotion, but they only talk about promotion within your class, not from class to class. So, one of the civil service classes is a police officer, one of the civil service classes is a police sergeant, a police specialist, but, you know, how do you get from one to another? It's not clear and, and, and then you go back to the charter and how does the charter set up? The charter's set up to give the authority for administration of, of all the, all the city stuff, including personnel to the city manager and the city manager oversees that.
Is our charter, is our charter specify that we have to use the commission? Is that in our?
The charter doesn't, and I'm, I'm not gonna speak for the attorney, but the charter doesn't allow you to create boards and commissions that are in, there are, there are a few that are created in ordinances that happen later, but not in the charter.
So, by our, by our bylaws or our, our charter, we don't necessarily have to participate in, in that.
But you created.
A long time ago, the city council
Right.
by ordinance created.
Created, yeah, that, okay, I understand, okay.
It's something that you can opt into.
Okay.
And that's what the city council.
And that's why you can abolish it.
Yeah, and so the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities at their, their conference in the spring indicated that like the city of Fergus Falls just eliminated their civil service commission. Uh, they're advising that you eliminate the civil service commissions because they run into so many problems and yet at the same time, I think it was Sartell, or one of those cities in, near St. Cloud, all positions are hired through the civil service commission. So, if you're an accountant and you want a job, the civil service commission would go through the exam process and they talk about and exams in our civil service rules, but we don't really give exams, it's, that's like an old school thing where they used to give exams and then you'd get scored and then depending on how you did, you might be on the list for, for promotion, but but it's just, it's just one of those things where, you know, um, you, you really don't realize what's in there until you wind up using it. And then you can start seeing the things where you're conflicting with what's going on with other things like union contracts.
How would, uh, how would the hiring process work then?
Just like we do every other position in the city, we advertise, we, uh, we have to go through a process of, uh, which um, I don't know if it says anything about the veterans preference requirements in the civil service rules, but we have to go through veterans preference on, on selecting candidates for interviews and things like that, but um, but that's the full-time staff does that.
Department mission right now, they make recommendations, right, like for example, this last sergeant position?
They provide a list, that's, that's what they do, is they provide a list of the candidates that are ranked, so for instance, for the chief's position, what, what I've asked them to do is I've asked them to provide a list to me of the candidates ranked, so I can look at it, make a selection. But I'll sit in on the interviews and then I'll let them figure out how they wanna arrange the list. Uh, but there is nothing in there that says you have to take number one or number two or any one of the top three.
Where's this list originated? Who, is it a list that's out there?
No, it's just a list of whoever applies.
Just, oh, just application.
So, if there's five people that apply, then they'll rank them and then they actually have a score sheet that they use for ranking candidates and uh, in some cases, um, I mean, you have three people on the civil service commission, they may not be able to do interviews during the day, um, and depending on, you know, what, what, what's really happening with it. You know, I, I haven't been involved with it as much before, but now with, with Ross leaving, then I step in and I, I help coordinate it and, and get them through the process, but it's just one more step, because as far as I'm concerned, we're the ones that are making the selection. You know, not the civil service commission, they're just facilitating the process of, of applying and interviewing and then and then whoever the authority is that gets to make the decision to hire, gets to make the decision to hire.
Now, the current members on that commission is John, John O'Mason, correct, they have Peg and Rick and Burt?
Dale Peterson and Peg and Rick and Burt, yes.
Yep.
And we, we met, uh, we met, I think it was a week ago Friday to look at the chief's process, so. But I thought I'd make you aware of that, cause, you know, we identified that, we've been talking about it and Aaron's been doing some research on it. The city council would need to have a five oh vote to do that, if you didn't, then it'd be in place and then we wind up having, you know, potential conflicts within there that may go somewhere else, may not go somewhere else. The union, it, it was really interesting to me that the union is silent on the civil service commission, which is really, you would've thought there would've been something in there that would've indicated, you know, uh, that that process was part of it. So, it could be that the union contracts never ever took into consideration civil service commission and and like I said, there, there, there are cities that are no longer, there's not many cities in Minnesota that have civil service commissions. Um, probably bigger cities might have them, um, but, you know, it just doesn't come up that often.
So, is this, was this only used like in the hiring of a chief or is it used for any?
Police officers.
So, they were all involved, the civil service commission has been involved in every police officer hiring? And the sergeant hiring?
Typically, we get together and, and the civil service commission would get together and say that they think we should hire somebody. Um, when we, uh, the, between myself and a couple other officers, we would score applications to establish a list of who got interviewed, traditionally interviews were usually myself and outside chief and one of the, the civil service members. Civil service, we always had a civil service member sitting on, on the interview panels to represent that, that courtroom we interviewed.
So, why is this a conflict all of a sudden? I mean, we've had lots of police officers that have been hired and if this process has been used, why is it now like in conflict with everything that you've been doing?
Cause your attorney finally got around to reading the statutes.
It's always been a conflict.
It's, it's been a conflict for a long time, it's just it, we didn't examine it until, until recently, um, and you know, this is something that was created a long time ago and then we had traditions that were, that came along through the different chiefs that came along. And no one really had any reason to question it. And, you know, nowadays, we've got complicated union contracts and we've got new statutes that have come along in the last ten, twenty years. And these things haven't been examined in a while and it's time to examine it.
Yeah, I think it's partly because, partly because there's a sergeant position that's involved with it. And so then, you know, that was advertised and that was interviewed and, and, and the selection was made and, and it's outside of the police department. So, I think that's part of the issue, cause there's some questions that came up, uh, with, with law enforcement people about that, you know, and how that works and everything and and you look at that and, um, and then, then all of a sudden you have a chief that's leaving, so then you know, you, you come in and you, you have to go, so we have two, basically, one process finishing, one process starting. two, basically, one process finishing, one process starting, and so it, it really comes, it really comes to light more when, when, when you have things going on and there's discussion about stuff that's happening. You know, because there's confusion on part of the union on the contract. There's confusion with regards to the civil service on that and, and, uh, at the same time, there's some other issues that, that, uh, that, that we're working through and things like that.
So, Blaine, currently, they, they're basically giving you a list, you're still making your recommendation, you're the only one that gets to make the recommendation to the council. They don't have a say in it, do they?
On the chief, right.
On the chief, they don't.
Right. And the rest of them don't even come to the council?
Doesn't come there because that's your authority below a chief and anything below a department head. So whether or not we actually have the commission or not, they, even if they gave you a list of three and you wanted somebody else, you could still hire somebody else.
Right, they, they don't hire, their, their job is to screen and recommend.
Okay, screen.
Is what they do.
Right, okay.
Is there some merit in, 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 I guess the, cause obviously these people are representatives of the community, is there some merit in them having a voice to that? I mean, if we dissolve the commission, I guess that would be my only concern.
Okay, I guess I, I see it as, I, I don't, I don't think that's a good point, but it's not, it's not the question of whether we want their input, it's a question of, of their, their, the rules are not the same. That's what we're trying to get away from, they're conflicting. So, you know, ours are different than theirs. That's what we're trying to get rid of is the conflict.
Can you modify the rules that they fit? That's the other option.
Well, and that's one of.
I see your point though, you know, we've had this commission for a long time, people are used to having it, and I think one of the things that it serves as, as a gateway between the community and the police. And you could certainly replace it with some kind of advisory board so that you don't lose that connection. What I'm mainly concerned with is the statutory framework that we have to work with. If we have a, a police commission that we've adopted under the statute, we have to follow those statutes. And because we have to follow statutes, it conflicts with other statutes that were passed twenty years after those and it also conflicts with the union contracts. But you're right, we need to find a way to keep that connection.
I think it's important, myself, and if we could dissolve one and maybe adopt something different, just so the public has voice.
Don't we negotiate the union contracts? Isn't that part of a negotiation, the union?
Yes.
So, somehow I'm thinking that can be worked in, how that would, I mean, so there is an opportunity?
Yeah, yeah, there is. Well, and that's what I said, I'm, I'm really surprised that there hasn't been any discussion whatsoever from the union about the civil service commission until just recently.
It is surprising.
You know, and, and, uh, you know, at the same time, I, I think the thing that you have to do is start looking at what are those conflicts and, and, cause that's one of the things I suggested to Aaron is, you know, then the civil service commission rules, so we're ignoring some of the civ, civil service commission rules right now because they don't apply. If we, if we took them all completely at, at face value what the civil service commission is supposed to be doing, those people are gonna be around a lot. You know, because like I said, you know, if an officer gets hurt on the job, you know, then they should be going to the civil service commission and asking for, you know, permission to be off work hurt. And it's like, well, we're not gonna do that, you know, because we, we have workers' comp and that process is all in place and, and at the same time, there's, there's some things that aren't even spelled out, you know, that we're assuming. So I'm assuming that the, the, uh, appointing authority for the chief of police is the city manager and not the chief of police. But that's what it says in the civil service contract, uh, rules is that the chief of police is the, uh, appointing authority. And there is no mention whatsoever of the city manager, so then we make assumptions on that, you know, and how it works and, and even with regards to, you know, some of the process, you know, because, I mean, theoretically, what I should do is go to the civil service commission and say, "We have an opening for chief, give me a list." And then they take it and they do everything, but it doesn't work that way. You know, the secretary for the police department is really the main person that works on all that stuff and so it's, over the years, it's, it's worked kind of the way normal things work and then you bring them in at certain points to, to do certain parts of that, like maybe even sign off on a, a rank listing of, of candidates even though that they didn't all participate in it. But, you know, it just, to, and to me, you know, and obviously I've talked to Aaron, I, I think, when I read the charter, I, I see it a little bit different because the charter sets up the, the form of government as a city manager, form of government gives authorities to the city manager to do things and then the council can't change that through ordinances, you know, and, and take that over. And then in this case, you got a civil service commission that theoretically is taking that over, you know, in, in this process and, and, uh, it can't work that way with, with, you know, what happens in union contracts and stuff like that. Cause if you start, if you start morphing the union contract to intertwine with the civil service, it's gonna get really, really confusing doing it that way and I would imagine that the union's not gonna wanna go through a civil service commission on, on, on everything and, and, uh, the easiest thing might be to tweak their rules, uh, but, you know, the, like I said, you know, one of the organizations that, that we work with, uh, you know, their labor attorneys are, are recommending to all of the member cities within the coalition that this is something that should change and then some of them, you know, are, like I said, Fergus Falls was a pretty big city and, and then, and, uh, they decided to get rid of theirs just, just to avoid all those conflicts that were in there. Um, the next hire that we do is gonna be the chief and they're gonna give me a list and coming back to you in probably the middle of, of, uh, January, depending on who applies and how that works and asking you to, to approve a, a new chief and, and actually, we'll probably be coming back to you, uh, at, right after he's done and asking you to appoint somebody in the interim to be, to serve as a chief because there are some requirements that we have to fill with regards to a cer, certain couple things, uh, I know the county talked to me about it a little bit.
What, what type of information will you be supplying to the council of, on the candidates that you approve? Will there be a certain amount of information that we get to go over, um, before we would make that, or approve that recommendation?
Well, that's, yeah, I.
I mean, I just remember, I don't remember when, when, when we did.
Well, we actually appointed Ross on the interim.
Right.
When Jim left and then we provided your resolution with the recommendation to.
Well, I mean, I, I understand that, but is there any, any more, you know, we're gonna probably see some candidates that maybe we don't know or maybe there is one we know, but is there, how much information does the council get pre-hand on that candidate before? Do we get, you know, so that we can look it over or, I mean, just, what do we get? With just other, other than just the memorandum that's in front of us?
It's not our choice.
Yeah, you're gonna get the name.
No, no, it's, it's our choice to approve the candidate or not.
Right, correct.
So I was asking how much information do we get to see on the candidate before we just rubber stamp it?
Well, I can tell you, what's happened in the past is probably none. You, you were given a resolution with the name, you know, and then more than likely there's a discussion, well, it was easier with Ross because Ross was here, but, uh, you know, if it's, if it's an, you know, I'll probably, what I would probably do is like I normally do with the city councils, I'd probably write you a memo and I'd probably say, you know, "The civil service commission met and here's the rank listing that they gave me and there's, you know, three candidates and candidate," you know, but, um, that's probably what I do is provide you in, information that way, you're gonna know who it is, where they came from and, you know, and then we do background checks on them to make sure that there, there's nothing in their, their past that, that comes up, but, but it's not, it's probably not a lot of information. Well, and that's a, yeah, it's kind of a hard thing, it's like, it's like, um, I don't, I don't know that there's ever been, you know, a case where a discipline has happened with a department head because it's the same thing.
Right.
If I wanted to let a department head go, I'd have to come to you and ask you to approve it.
Right.
And then you're gonna wanna know what's going on and then we probably have a closed door, I, I.
Yeah, that's what we.
You know, stuff like that, but, but it, I, I would tell you, I'd, I'd probably wanna know from you, well, what would you like to know? You know, when it comes to it? You know, and then we would maybe do it that way.
I guess what I'd like to see, Blaine, my recommendation then would be, if we do, you know, would it come with that resolution, uh, abolishing that civil service commission? Maybe at that same time, have an alternative, uh, whatever you wanna call it. What did you call that?
Advisory board. Advisory board.
I guess that would be my recommendation, have information, all that, what's that gonna look like?
Are, are we looking at getting rid of this before the next hire? I mean, that's.
No, no, there's, no, no.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm just letting you know that there's, you know, there's, there's things that came up with that, but, uh.
Yeah, I didn't know what timeframe you were looking at, if there was some order to act on right away or within the next month, about the two or what you were thinking.
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't, we don't know because we haven't, I, I think at a minimum, what we'd have to do is start putting down what some of the conflicts are.
Okay.
You know, and I haven't had a chance to go through all the civil service commission and, I mean, I, well, I've started looking at it and marking the things where, well, it's like, this will never happen this way. You know, so then, at a minimum, they'd have to change their rules, but then they can't just change their rules and make the civil service commission not a civil service commission because there's state statutes that set up civil service commissions and that's part of the problem. So, yeah.
That's a good idea though. Would it be helpful to you if we took and did a side-by-side, maybe like a chart to show you, this is what the, uh, civil service statutes say we have to do, this is what the other statutes say we have to do, this is what the.
And, and these conflicting.
Yeah, show up, show.
Information, yeah.
What is the other statute that conflicts? I mean, is it a certain one or just multiple?
There's a section, and I can't remember the sign off the top of my head, it's chapter six twenty-nine or something like that, where they have actual, uh, rules on law enforcement, on how they're to conduct discipline, um, and that definitely conflicts with the civil service commission because you have one statute that says the chief or if it's a county, the sheriff has direct control over those decisions and they are the only authority. And then you have the civil service commission rules that state they have that authority and it can't be both, only one can have that authority. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that in the chart.
There, we burned up almost half an hour.
There you go.
So that worked out pretty good. Um, I'll just touch, based on this, this polling place thing, cause, uh, I did go out to the university, they did exit polls outside of the polling places, uh, they did a really good job of presenting the information they found out and, uh, it, it appeared that the general feeling was that the polling places were, were good polling places, they're easy to find, the polling process went really easy, the, the new technology that was used was, was easy to use and, uh, there really wasn't a lot of complaints. The, the interesting thing that came out was there's, uh, kind of a consensus that maybe mailed, they didn't wanna do mailed-in ballots, uh, but yet at the same time, the younger people, probably college students, liked the idea of doing mailed-in ballots. You know, cause, you know, I, I, I think maybe they, they saw that as a way, although they don't go to the mailboxes, from what I understand, on campus very often. Uh, so that, that was kind of a flip of maybe, maybe what you would perceive, but, uh, generally, you know, what we, we determined was it, it didn't seem to be a big problem and it didn't seem to, to, I mean, everybody found where they're going and, and everything worked out really well. It's the same really, you know, consensus that, uh, we got from the judges. The judges thought it went very well, there weren't long lines, technology worked really well, some people know how to use, Sid was one of the judges, knows how to use the technology and so that worked out really well. The interesting thing I shared with them is that, um, that same day that, uh, I went out there to listen to their presentation, uh, they, they announced on, on the news that state election officials are recommending to the legislature that the two thousand twenty primary, presidential primary be done by mailed-in ballot for the entire, entire state of Minnesota. Uh, so we'll see what happens in the legislature. Uh, twenty-five, Minnesota had the highest voter turnout in the nation again, which we usually do, and twenty-five percent of the voters in Minnesota did not go to a polling place. They, they either did mailed-in ballots or they did absentee ballots, early voting, you know, so the trend is that more and more people are, are liking the fact that they don't have to go to a polling place on election day and, and vote, so, um, you know, the recommendation is, uh, and actually I heard somewhere else that it sounds like, uh, they're talking about maybe changing the legislation so communities ten thousand and below could opt for mailed-in ballots. Uh, that's, you know, we're pushing for the authority to be able to opt for mailed-in ballots. Uh, one of the new things I mentioned on the bottom here is that every year now, we have to set polling places for the next year, even though we don't have an election. So at the next council meeting, I'm gonna be bringing, it's a, they, and the reason they're doing it is because there's, a lot of communities still have odd-year elections. Most of them went to even-year elections. Morris used to have odd-year elections for the city council and mayor and then they went to, you know, had even-year regular elections and, and then you switch so everything's on one ballot during one election. Every other year, we don't have an election in Morris, but, so, so that's why they did it is, is because there's still some there and yet, at the same time, um, they don't want polling places switching closer to the, to the actual election date. So then they passed a law that said, "Yeah, if you're gonna do anything different with polling places, it's gotta be done by December thirty-first of the year." We, I don't think we have any cases where we might have a special election for referendum or anything like that that would come up, but there are cities that do that, you know, and, and, and so the next council meeting, you're gonna have a resolution come to the table that's gonna set the polling places just the way they were and then we'll do that again next year. And, uh, I thought it was really good, the students did a very good job. I think some people maybe were afraid to talk to them, but, but, uh, that turned out pretty good. We already approved the two E-Sultan bills that I mentioned in there, but, uh, we did take out the big one, um, as I mentioned in here, so that's done. Um, yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Quick question back to the polling places, it's good to sound, it's good to hear that it was okay, but it's some of the, um, when we had the students here talking, they talked about a high percentage of students that vote, were they tracking that at all? You know, that their numbers were so high and the amount of students they got, that's why, one of the reasons not to move it off campus, but were they tracking that, how the percentage of students?
I think, they were talking about that and I don't know that they have the res, there's somehow that, somewhere that they can track students through, I think, the university syst, I, we couldn't figure it out. We did have a discussion on that.
I was just wondering if that was coming up during that.
Yeah, so, but they didn't know what the, they didn't know what the results were on campus, I don't think, but, um, it sounded like everybody, every, it didn't sound like there were too many issues, you know, with that and, and.
Good idea.
Yeah, and there's people from the student, you know, campus government that, that were part of the political science class and, uh, one of their advisors was there for, for the presentation, so. Any questions?
Okay. Um, we have new business authorization, authorization to close at noon on Christmas Eve. That would be city hall and all city, city offices?
All city offices? Anybody that can.
Except, except PD.
There's some, there's some that can't, like law enforcement, don't, they, the police can't take off and, actually, in the union contracts, the, the way we negotiated it was, if city hall is given permission to close at noon, then the other, the unions get a half a day of, of extra holiday. You know, and depending on, you know, if it's a police officer, there's some pay that, you know, overtime that goes with that half day and stuff. But if Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday or a Sunday, then city hall wouldn't be affected.
Do you need a motion on that thing?
I guess so.
No, I think.
I think that's critical.
No, they, they will, they will decide whether or not, I think they're gonna be open all day, but they will decide whether or not they're gonna be open.
Is that like a Sunday, I mean, like a Sunday deal, they decide whether they stay open on Sundays?
Right. And actually they did, I think they did open on two Sundays this year.
Yeah.
Stayed open on two Sundays this year. But yeah, if they, if they, if they're open and you're working, then there's some language in the contract that you get some overtime for that afternoon. No, New Year's Eve, we don't mess with. New Year's Day is a holiday, but not New Year's Eve.
Is there wording on the bars closing at a certain time on Christmas Eve?
No.
It's just been pretty much.
They can stay open.
They all, and the community have closed at a pretty decent hour. I know some of the neighboring communities have stayed open all night, but I just was curious that it's just been pretty much on an honor system.
They can't stay open all night.
Well, until one.
Until one or two, whatever.
Normal hours.
No, we don't have any special rules for that.
But yeah, there's no special.
It's kind of up to the, the bars. The Legion's closed, Christmas Eve.
Doesn't open at all. Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion to authorize if that's what we choose to do, to close on Christmas Eve.
I am moved to authorize that, that it pulls at noon on Christmas Eve, city office.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Did I, did I give you the signed bill list?
Yeah, I think it got down there.
Okay, I signed it, okay. Old business? Any old business? Informational items, we had Morris Media Police Department. MDP, MDP. MPD, media. I think that should be MPD, right? Anyway, media reports, legislative priorities from the coalition and NPR news on electric cars for informational items. One other thing I'd like to bring up, congratulations to Sid and Sam and the whole group for their solar in Morris video. It took third place in the wide, wide spectrum of those videos, eighteen? Yeah, I think there was eighteen. So congratulations for sure. And there's, I, I guess there'd be a little money for the clad villagers?
Dollar cash prize winnings and we're gonna give it to the robotics team.
Perfect.
Cool.
For their solar initiative. Awesome. Any, let's see, is there anything else we need to do? Anything else before the budget meeting? I'll turn it over to Blaine for the budget, budget meeting.
You should have a copy of the slides and I think last year I put them in the packet, but I, you know, I apologize for that. I've been pretty much out of the office, I'll just let you know upfront. I've pretty much been out of the office since about Thursday and I'll probably be out of the office. We're having an issue with my mom and, and so it's been pretty hectic, but I did get a chance to come in and work this up for you and we will go through it. There's a couple of big items that we probably didn't have in the last few. The slides are pretty small, but you should be able to see it here and then. One of the things that we're gonna try to do is talking to Sam about, and actually Ben a little bit, about maybe doing, doing some kind of video presentation of this that we could put on Facebook and, and YouTube and that way we can get it out to the public. So this is the, the budget hearing. If anybody from the public wants to ask questions, they can. And it's the two thousand eighteen levy and the two thousand nineteen budget. So the first thing we look at is the property tax levy. And one of the things I had to do, and we talked about it in the work session, is we, we wanted, we wanted to get to about three percent, so then I actually had to scale back the general fund levy a little bit to be able to balance this out, plus we used some of the, the money that was in the capital outlay transfer from the general fund to get it down to, to a three percent increase in tax levy. This also includes the sixty-five thousand dollar levy for the new fire truck that's gonna be coming. Even though we don't have it, we haven't paid for it, we do have the authority to levy for it. Moving into next year and we'll actually collect the taxes next year and then we'll turn around and we'll probably make the first payment on that, that certificate of debt like February, March of the following year. So that's one of the reasons. And then there was one bond that came off, so that's pretty good, adding a levy for like sixty-five thousand dollars and yet we're still at three percent. And this is how it's broken out. So we're a little bit heavier on debt levy, maybe than we were on general levy. We still have the tax abatement for the Hartland Motors property and, and I didn't go back and look at how many, that was a nine-year project, I believe, and so time goes by pretty quick and, you know, eventually that'll come off, but, but that's really taxes they pay directly and get back and it doesn't affect anybody else in, in town. And then we have the library fund, that's part of it too. So that's how that levy is made up. This is a tough graph to look at and actually one of the numbers keeps floating around for some reason, but this is an overall levy. I always like to point out, if you go back over here and look way back in two thousand one, you know, we, we dropped it down and we got more local government aid and, and so that number popped over here, so one thousand two hundred and fifty-one, or one, one million two hundred and fifty-one thousand levy here and we're at one million, what, five, whatever, I mean, five sixty-two, so we're finally over that. But it took a while to get over that and then we're just slowly moving up, you know, with expenses as they go. So that's still, it's still one I like to show the legislature, you know, because that's what local government aid did. And then just, here's the breakdown. It's pretty much general fund and we have all these little debt service levies. The nice thing about every one of those levies, except for the library and the general fund, they're, they're all timed. So they will go away, they won't be there forever and typically it's fifteen years, so. As we move forward into the next few years, we're gonna have some of those that are gonna come off. That's gonna give us some room to do some additional work as, as we get into the future levies. I just actually got this today, a person that does it wasn't available for another reason, but this is the market value, so this is what, all the property in town that's worth money that we can use to, to put taxes against. Doesn't include tax increment financing or anything that we're not allowed to tax, but you can see the value went up. So the market value of property in Morris going into two thousand nineteen went up. And I would guess some of that is because, because it didn't look like this earlier. But I think some of it is because Willie's came onto the, to the market value side that we can tax now. So their value came in there, it's three point four percent, so that's a taxable value. If you go to the tax capacity, what that means is basically you take your value and then you take all your tax rates that state of Minnesota has a bunch of tax rates, residential rates, different levels, commercial rates, all that. When you take all those tax rates, if you taxed at a hundred percent of those rates, we would generate two point nine million and we're, we're, in two thousand eighteen it was two point six million. So that tax capacity actually went up almost ten percent that we have the ability to tax. And then we take our levy. Well, there's a rate that's calculated based off, off of that, where we take our levy that we're doing now and we compare it to that levy. And, and last year we're at fifty-seven percent of that tax capacity. This year that went down, so we're only at fifty-three percent of that tax capacity. So if we, if we decided to tax all of that two point nine million, you know, we'd have, be at a hundred percent of the tax capacity rate. And that's as, as deep as I'll ever go in that discussion, I think you've heard it before. I, I did give you a memo and I don't, I don't know if you have any questions on this, let me, let me just. I didn't actually put it up here, because there's a lot of stuff, but I'll just touch on some of the bigger ones. So there's a minimal increase in local government aid, it's been pretty flat. You'll actually see, you'll see some of that information coming up here shortly. This budget, we split out the utility fund into a water utility and a sewer utility. Did you find it, Jeff? It's probably on the back of the, it's on the back of the memo page.
That's where I was saying.
Yeah, go to the back. Yeah. And you're gonna see as we get in the back, the water utility, we actually split it out for this year. And then, and then going into next year, you can see, but the water utility goes up considerably because of the new water plant coming in, debt service and operational costs. Wages are set, we have a contract that has wages set this year and next year. Health insurance, I, I told you that health insurance actually went down just a, a little bit, which is, which is really nice and, and worked out good for the budget. We're maintaining the same workforce except for we're adding one water wastewater position that we're actually splitting in this budget between, it's in the detailed budget, I'm not gonna go into that, but we split that between the water utility fund in the, the water production department and then the storm water administration fund is picking up half of it. And then the plan is to hire the new full-time employee sometime after the beginning of the year and then that person will be on board to be part of the train up of the new water treatment plant. Let's see, uh, let me just look down here and see. Is there any questions on any, any of this that you might have? I gave to you and, I'm just looking if you wanna, there's no election next year, so, oh. We did, I did do some accounting to deal with the, we increased the franchise fee percentage for cable to generate some money to, to do equipment, things like that, programming and stuff, and so then that's factored in, it's about fifteen thousand dollars a year that we brought, we're bringing back into the general fund budget. The liquor store, I wound up doing a little bit more liquor store transfer. We talked about it a little bit in the budget work session where you know, one of the things with the reclaim projects and the capital improvement fund, we're going into the Pommetteer Lane, Riverview Drive area and it makes sense to do that whole area at once. But it's a little bit more expensive than the normal process that we would have and so then we're gonna transfer some money from capital outlay reserve into that fund. And you'll see here in a minute where we have the deficit, deficit budget to do that and that's just the way you get reserves out. It's a one-time deal, we don't have to do it every year. One of the things I would tell you is that sometime in May, we're gonna know what the legislature's gonna do if for some reason they, they put a chunk of money into local government aid and we wind up getting additional local government aid and then I'll come back to you and we'll sit down and we'll talk about what we want to do with that. It could be that we offset this, it could be that we, we look at doing like a one-time equipment thing or something to be able to, to use that money, but it wouldn't be spent on ongoing things.
Blaine, could you, what's the difference between the capital improvement fund and the capital outlay fund?
Roads, basically for improvement, equipment for capital outlay.
Okay.
So the improvement funds, we're doing all the overlays and reclaims and, and that kind of stuff and capital outlay is all equipment that we buy.
Okay, thanks.
I guess we had a couple of questions, Blaine, on the criteria, what kind of criteria did you use to establish the water utility rates?
I'll show you.
Without going into really, I mean.
Yeah, I, I've got a couple of slides to show you. Basically, basically what it's gonna be is, we know what our sales are in water and we know what our expenses are for debt service and for operational costs and and we know what our current rate is and we figured out a rate three point of those and we added it to it. But I can tell you, you know, we don't know completely how everything's gonna shake out and how that runs. And so it's one of those things that we'll be able to come back to at, for next year's budget and look at whether or not we need to tweak it a different way. Yeah, and then the fire, fireman's benefit, we're gonna raise it another fifty dollars. I, did I give them? I don't believe I gave you the, the worksheet that I normally would give you if you wanna see that, you know. The comparables that I use that we would go meet with Fire Relief Association. Yeah, so that's pretty much what's in there for the revenue expense considerations. Here's the city budget. Overall, eleven million dollars went up twelve point nine percent. Most of that was the, the utility. You know, the, what's happening with the water fund, a little bit of it is capital outlay fund. What's happening there. The general fund budget went up point nine percent. So a very slight increase in the general fund budget despite the fact that we had, you know, we, we had a wage increase. I mean, the insurance staying the same was a big deal and and then we used some of the capital outlay to go over, so, so that actually, that actually dropped a little bit. And then here's a really, really small graph, but this is the budget going back to two thousand one, you can see just kind of a steady increase and then the last few years have been pretty flat. You know, and, and sometimes what happens is, this is the general fund budget, but we might have a couple issues that come in that, that may jump or drop. LGA, pretty much flat as a pancake now, you can see that. We're hoping that we can get a little bit more coming out of there. We are one of the cities that gets a large percentage of LGA. You know, when I talk to other cities, there's actually some cities that are losing LGA through the formula that's out there that we have. Detroit Lakes, I think, has been losing LGA for the last few years. Where we have, and I think it's partly because of need, partly because of the population that they have. This is a wild graph, but it's basically the, the general fund. This is general fund expenses, this is local government aid and this is our tax levy. So you can see our tax levy was higher down there and then the very next year, local government aid went up and our taxes went down and then now we're starting to catch up a little bit more, but if for some reason we got a chunk of local government aid, we'll do the same thing probably, keeping the tax, tax levy down. But I don't think we're, I don't think any administrator's gonna do like we did back in two thousand two where we dropped the tax levy because the aid went up, because that aid is so hippie. You know, the very next year they can drop it. Capital Improvement Fund. This, this is higher, it's up twenty-three percent and that's because that neighborhood we're going into is gonna require some additional work to be done in there. And basically it's, you know, we're gonna do the Pommetteer, like I said, Riverview Drive, that area out there and then we'll just do it all once and it'll be done, you won't have to worry about it and go back to it. Riverview Drive, that area out there. And then we'll just do it all once and it'll be done. We won't have to worry about it and go back to it. And then there's a couple of other smaller things that we're gonna be doing. I gave you the list. I don't know that I need to go over it. Fairly small list. Capital Outlay Fund, it's seventy-two percent increase. I think that's right, Matt, but. But that's because we're taking a chunk of the reserves and sending it over to the capital improvement fund. With about a hundred and thirty some thousand dollars that we're gonna be sending over there along with, you know, a recommendation that could be used for those projects. It's hard to put the listing in here. So you got the listing and capital improvements. There's a couple of big ticket items on, or capital outlay. Couple of big ticket items. Let me see if I can.
Lynn, I had a question on capital improvement before we get to that. On the capital improvement budget year two thousand nineteen, you say East Seventh Street, Oregon to Line Drive. And on the long-range capital improvement schedule, you have East Seventh Street, Columbia to Line Drive.
Yeah, so.
Do you know which, is it Oregon or Columbia?
So originally it was gonna be Columbia to Line Drive. And then when I talked to Jeff Kuhn, we talked about, they actually came in and surveyed from Oregon, you know, because there's some roadwork that may be done on that. That's a state aid road, so we'll wind up using state aid funds to do it. Yeah, so I probably didn't correct that.
Should it be Oregon or?
It's Oregon.
It is Oregon, okay.
Looking at Oregon right now, I'll go Line Drive.
Okay.
You know, and then, you know, one of the things that we're looking at is things like sidewalks, curbs, those kind of things to go in that. But it just made sense to look at that whole stretch of road.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
So if we look at capital outlay. You know, we have a lot of the basic stuff that was in there before. Actually, I'll tell you upfront, I actually put in a lease amount for electric high ground car. So if you don't wanna do that, then you know. I still have to look at, I asked the Ford base if they, because I think they have a Ford Focus that's on the state contract. But I went in and I talked to the local dealer. I haven't talked to Chevy yet, but I just wanted to get a feel for it. There's some little things we're looking at buying a police car. I believe the power's still on the list for an interceptor unless you hear something.
We never got those that are, our order was rejected and I've heard from other chiefs that their orders.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're still in for a Ford interceptor. And then there's a bunch of little things in here. We got the certificate of debt for the fire truck. The biggest one is the new, if you flip to the back pages, the new hoist for the public works garage. That's seventy thousand dollars to install a new one and. And then you can see where we're transferring a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the capital improvement fund to help shore it up for the reclaim projects. There's a couple of items that are in there that are in that. Like if you look on page two, there's a snowplow blade for the airport. It's forty thousand dollars. I might have had the wrong numbers in here. I can see. I never got a chance to get back to you on a couple of these. But it's a twelve thousand dollar man. And then for transit, we have a new transit bus coming. And the match is seventeen thousand dollars for that. But those are things that we're doing either every year or every other year. It's payment number four of a loader that we leased, leased purchase. That's twenty-one thousand. So we have one more payment coming up and then that'll come off and then we'll probably come back to you and look at maybe doing another big piece of equipment. I know there's always, you know, we have loaders, we have graders, we have dump trucks. So there's always gonna be something that's probably gonna come up on that. Any questions on that listing at all? Library fund is pretty much, it says a minus six, but it's really, it's really stayed the same. They, what we do with the library is we basically balance it out with, because they had wage increases, but then they have, I think an insurance change that brought it down there. And then we balance out the levy and the state aid to make sure that theirs comes out to even revenues versus expenses. They wanted another port time position, but they didn't pull one in the budget. And they didn't have any big ticket items. Here's storm water. So we're budgeting sixty-one thousand dollars from the, last year was sixty-three thousand. So the only difference is how much money we're taking in from that. So it's not a, it's not a big deal to try to balance it out. But we do have that new position coming out of there. Lodging tax, it's up a little bit, even though the one hotel is probably not lodging a lot of people. But then they wouldn't have been producing stuff in the past. They weren't lodging a lot of people in the past. But the one thing I would say about this, and I did talk to the chamber director and the president of the chamber. My recommendation to you on this issue, and we can maybe talk about it after the first few years, that we drop a contract with the Chamber of Commerce to buy time from their employee. So I went down and I took a look and what it comes out to, I mean, obviously if we're using their employee, there's an office and there's equipment and there's all kinds of things like that. So right now we're transferring or providing twenty thousand dollars of support to the chamber. That really amounts to about fifteen hours a week of time. Time and expenses for offices and things like that, insurance, workers' comp, all those kind of things, benefits. So that's my recommendation is that we drop a contract with them for time and then we could allocate that time the way we want allocated. Because that's really one of the big questions is the tourism board. Let's talk about that a little bit. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that. That's the one item I would, just to make sure I wanna point out to you that that would be a little bit different next year. And then, you know, we can, because we're required by law with this lodging money to make sure it goes towards marketing mores for tourism and not anything else. And that's the reason I recommend that.
How are you gonna place that?
That person would report directly to me and I would make sure that, I would basically sit down and make sure we know and understand what kind of activities that we need done for tourism and then through the tourism board, you know, to make sure, you know, whether it's. The first thing we'd have to do is understand what tourism stuff is and we've been having that discussion. You know, so that person would work directly with me on the different issues. And one of the things, you're gonna see something come back at the next meeting. You know, we need to make sure we're following all of our procedures on how we're doing things, whether it's quotes, bids, whatever it is. And, you know, we've had some discussion about local companies doing stuff. And so then I can take the lead on that, make sure it's being done the way we want. Not that it hasn't really been done, but it's just, it just needs to be, it needs to be clear what we want and then we need to direct that stuff to be done.
Chris, how's it being done now?
Well, right now, basically that person works for the chamber and that person is directed by the chamber director. And we have, we have no idea where those hours are being worked. You know, for instance, if they need that, I mean, it's a twenty-hour-a-week person. So really that doesn't leave much time to be doing other things. And when you're doing a lot of other things that are chamber-oriented, you know, then we don't get what we need done on our stuff. Like, you know, checking posts to Facebook that, you know, our consultants are doing and actually working with consultants closer and those kind of things. But I just need to step in more and help make sure that's taken care of. Because it's really, it's really not clear the difference between chamber and tourism. You know, even when you look at like Facebook posts, you know, you know, somebody coming to town to see a parade probably isn't a tourism thing versus, you know, people that are gonna come here to stay to go hunting or even like snowmobiling, ice fishing, ag tourism. We've identified a lot of those things and that's where the focus maybe should be. But it just, it's like, we finally got some clearer data on, you know, how much money it costs and who's doing maybe what. And, you know, I think, I think based on the information I had, we're probably getting about five hours a week of time. Now, there's times where they're busier, times where maybe they aren't busy. But that just isn't right, the way that's being done. Here's all the debt service, all the bonds, you know, that are out there. And then you may, the interest rates are going up a little bit, but usually from time to time they come and ask us to refinance them. So then we get to the water utility fund. So we split it up. This is water. And this is the projected revenues, projected expenses for the water utility for two thousand nineteen. And then let me just go to the next one here. So then you asked about the rate. So we determined, and I worked with Dev on this and the engineers, we determined the new rate and actually one of the things I provided you in the packet is we're recommending that the rate be raised January first, three percent. There's a resolution in there. And then April first would be raised to the new rate that are gonna be used for the plant as it moves forward and the utility moving forward. We had two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of debt service that's added to the utility fund. Right now we know that there's about, and let me just pull something out. I didn't wanna throw all the numbers on there so you could see them, but the way the rate's used is we're using cubic feet, hundred cubic foot units is how our rate works. So two dollars and fifty cents for a hundred cubic foot unit is the old rate after it's adjusted for the first of the year. And then when we get into April, the, the gallons of water that are used by the city for billing purposes, about a hundred and forty-eight million gallons. We're gonna bring Denko Two onboard. They're at seventy-five million gallons. So that's how we come up with this two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three units to calculate. So we divided that into what the debt service is and came up with eighty-eight cents for a hundred cubic foot unit. Alberta is not included in this because we're not allowed to raise our rate for debt service on a building. That's the agreement that we have with them. And then for operations, we're basing upon the operations for the water plant, we're gonna go up about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That includes chemicals is a big part of it. There's about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of chemicals. There's other things utilities go in that go along, but half of the position going in there. And so we came up with a hundred and fifty cents per hundred cubic foot unit for operations expenses. And then we add that to the rate and that's what we're gonna generate now. There's a lot of other things that go into the amount of water that we use that was kinda interesting because we flush hydrants, we backwash at the plant and so we actually have a lot of water that we, and actually one of the things that's interesting about the plant is that the new reconditioned wells that we have out there are gonna have new flow meters on it where we're gonna get an accurate reading on how much water is coming out of the ground, which we haven't had in the past. And then we have an accurate meter for what water goes up to the tower to be sold. In some cases, it's not sold because it's used in hydrants to flush, maybe a fire, something like that. Or if we have a water main break, you're gonna lose water. We actually lose a lot of water. And so one of the things that we're gonna be focusing on is trying to identify where all of our water is going as best we can. And there's some things that we're gonna be working on with the utility guys. It's kinda interesting and the new plant is actually gonna recycle backwash water. So they figure half, half the water is gonna be used for backwashing in the new plant as this. But we gotta get through a whole year and just kinda figure out what's going on with it. And then, and then for Alberta, then their rate right now is gonna be a hundred, a dollar thirty per hundred cubic feet. So they get the dollar fifteen and so they're gonna be going up to that two forty-five. Hopefully the math worked out right. I did this afternoon. So then it's gonna generate enough money to be able to run that plant. And then there's a little bit left over, you know, in case we have any kind of, you know, because it's the whole water utility. It's not just the plant. You know, we have to make sure that we have enough money left over in case something fails. And then it doesn't affect the sewer fund. And so then what does that mean? I had Dev do some work that, so this is just a quick look at some examples of impact. We figure it's gonna about double your water usage rate, not your bill, because your bill has garbage, your bill has sewer, you know, the storm water fee. But when you look at the water usage, it's probably gonna about double it. So when you look at your bill and we're gonna be providing some information out to the public on it. At the same time, you won't need salt. At the same time, you won't be using water to recharge your water softener because you won't need a water softener. If you choose to do that, then we're gonna, as we said before, regulate water softeners so that they're programmable. I think one of the biggest issues we're gonna have with the water plants is people's perception of soft water versus what water actually is, you know, as a hardness. Because I know there's people that maybe think it's still hard, but it's really not hard. And then one of the things that we're learning a lot about is that, and I've mentioned it before, is you don't wanna be running your water softener if you have soft water because it's gonna probably do some damage to your pipes and we're getting some information from MBCA and the engineers on that. So this just gives you a rough idea what that's gonna be. Sewer utility fund is about half of what the old utility fund was. So that gives you a better idea of maybe what the water fund used to look like. You know, I didn't do a slide. I was gonna do one. I forgot to do one that showed what the old water fund looked like. And then that would give you a better idea of how much is going on. And then that would be April first if that were to happen. I hadn't told Nick at the ethanol plant yet, so that's probably gonna be sticker shot right now. Refuse fund is pretty much break even. Select the money and keep a little bit of it that comes over to us. Liquor store fund, one of the changes I made here, and I actually adjusted the slide because I knew it's gonna give you a better idea. So I adjusted down maybe our expectations for revenues in the liquor fund. We talked about that a little bit, I think, during the project. But so two point one million expenses. The net income is really low, but we have a reserve. And we're taking a little bit more money to go over and doing a couple of one-time things. And we can always adjust that back if we need to do it. But I showed you the budgeted revenues for this year are two point two million. And the actual revenues for two thousand seventeen were only about two point one million, like two million eighty-nine thousand. So I adjusted down our expectations a little bit. Doesn't mean they can't have a good year selling liquor, but I just wanted to try to make it a little bit more realistic. And at the same time, your cost of goods sold gets adjusted down too. Central garage, pretty much break even. And then just for the future, LGA's flat, insurance agreements everywhere, health insurance, we did really good. We have no idea what the next year's gonna be. Road improvements, we've got about three good years left to try to get caught up in the surface work and then. the surface work and then we'll probably start looking at some of the new maybe underground projects, uh, and then we continue to invest in capital and equipment. Questions?
Just that, what's going on with the next one, clarify the water utility funds, like, keep that up to that. You said there was a, the examples of the impact was for two months, is that what that was?
Two, two months, a month.
One billing cycle, yeah.
Oh, I see, I got that. Yeah, that one right there.
Yeah, that's, it's a billing cycle then, right?
That's what we're on.
Yeah. Correct, yeah, all right. But I mean, like, for me as an example, mine will probably go up, I would figure forty bucks maybe.
Less than.
Less than forty bucks, but I rent a water softener right now. So it's like twenty-five bucks a month for a water softener and a bag of salt a month is about what I use and, you know, depending on how, how often you're using water will dictate how many times it recharges. I don't know how many gallons a family uses to recharge. The one question I did ask Chris at Walton Make is whether or not we need to adjust our expectations of how much water we're actually selling based upon that and they said it's probably not going to be that big of a deal. You know, maybe one, one or two percent of the water that you're selling might not be sold because people are not softening water, but we'll get a feel for that as we're going through. Okay. Any other questions? I had my back to you, sorry about that, but it's easier to probably sit down and run the computer.
We talked about trying to do something with some solar on some buildings and we, our goals were to try to accomplish something. If we can make that work, is there anything in the liquor store fund or where would we do some funding if we can make that work to do something in nineteen?
It could be that we have a third party financer funding for, like we did before, or, um, the, the interesting part about that is, Ben's not here, but, you know, we had the Morse model, you get a pretty good feel for, you know, a one KW of solar costs about twenty-five hundred dollars to put up. So if you, if you did twenty, I mean, you get a pretty good idea what, what you need to calculate when you're doing that. Right now Otter Tail Power has, has the, the POP product, is the POP financing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they're giving for every KW you put up on your own building with your own meter, up to forty KW, they will give you a one thousand five hundred dollars towards that solar. So if it costs about twenty-five hundred to three thousand, half of it is paid for by just their, their credit that they're going to give you. So then we can look at how would we fund the other half of that and, uh, I, I think after we had the Morse model meeting, I think we need to look at doing, you know, at least picking out a couple of buildings to do, but one of the things you find, like the Platte Pillagers, I think found is, is, uh, if you do a great big huge project with everything, it's easier to find like a third party financer, it's easier to find a company to come in and do it. Uh, but if you do like one or two buildings, now you got to find somebody that wants to mess around with that and they don't really like to mess around with that. So that's one of the things we're trying to do is get information on a big project versus just doing a small project. And, but I think they figured, I think they're going to do that, the credit program, aren't they, through Otter Tail, the Platte Pillagers? Last I heard was, so that cut their cost down quite a bit to be able to do that, but the school has supply for the credits.
Right.
So I, I think the answer is yes, we should be doing that. Um, the one thing that we didn't have on the list that we'll figure out at the end of the year, um, we still haven't figured out the sidewalk thing, so we're going to be taking a look at that, uh, because the concrete, we didn't have a concrete company anymore. We were working with the engineers, uh, it's going to wind up being expensive having engineers design sidewalk projects for us, I think, but, uh, uh, we're, we're still working on that. He said Jay left him back there. You know, so our guys, our guys can do a little bit of stuff, but not based on, for instance, uh, I think we, we come to the board meetings, we talked about these bleacher pads for the, for the, uh, bleachers at the parks. Our guys can do those fairly easy, but big long sidewalks with curb and gutter and, you know, handicap cuts and stuff, it's going to be harder for them to do them. So we're, we'll take a look at that, how we're going to get that in.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right?
Nope, thank you, Blade.
It was a good year for us, I think.
So we have a few resolutions.
A few resolutions to do there.
I think we'll take them in order of what's on the agenda.
I guess I can rule out that first resolution, including the final twenty eighteen, uh, twenty-eighteen.
Any discussion on the, approving the levy resolution? Will a roll call vote on the resolution, please?
Lieutenant Waller?
Yes.
Solling?
Yes.
Bellington?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. And then the resolution adopting the budget.
I will move approval of the resolution adopting the final two thousand and nineteen budget for the city of Morris.
Any discussion on that resolution? Will a roll call vote, please?
Lieutenant Solling?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellington?
Yes.
Yes. And we have a resolution increasing the sewer and water utility rates for two thousand and nineteen.
I will move on the resolution increasing sewer and water utility rates for two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second that. Any discussion? We'll have roll call vote for that resolution, please.
Lieutenant Miller?
Yes.
Bellington?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Solling?
Yes.
Mayor Gates?
Yes. And we have a resolution increasing the water utility rates for the new water treatment plant, uh, starting April first.
I will move approval of that resolution.
I'd just like to say that I think it's a good idea that we move this back to April first.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was, I, you know, it's always hard to sell something that they don't have yet.
Right, right, yeah. Hopefully, uh, it'll be a soft sell in, uh, April first because the water will be flowing softly.
So, I don't want it up.
Pun intended. Any, uh, any other discussion? Will a roll call vote on that resolution, please?
Lieutenant Bellington?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Solling?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. And we have the resolution for the, setting the annual pension benefit for the Fire Relief
I will move, uh, on that resolution setting the annual benefit, the amount of twenty-one hundred and fifty-three years during January first, twenty nineteen for the Morris, by the, uh, association.
Will a roll call vote on that, please?
Lieutenant Waller?
Yes.
Solling?
Yes.
Bellington?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I think that's completed our resolutions.
I think so.
Um, any other business to come before the council?